Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff? Trustee Lanfair? Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item five, public comment. This is the time of the evening where anyone from the audience who wishes to share your thoughts with village council on items that are not on the agenda, you're welcome to come on up to the microphone and tell us what's on your mind. Would anybody like to address council on items that are not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move forward with reports. First off as trustee, Penny will start with you. Any report? Rob, now that you've been on for a week? No report from trustee Apitoff? John?
Just like to welcome Mr. Apitoff to the council.
Welcome.
Don't take him personally. No report for me.
Jack?
No report.
Okay. Village attorney?
No report.
Village manager?
No report this evening.
And village president, I do have a couple of items. Thursday evening, I anticipate providing a presentation along with our director of public works, Steve Saunders, to the Park District for the stormwater improvements, the proposed stormwater improvements at the Crow Island Woods facility. We've been talking about that for quite a few months and they're finally to, are finally ready to bring forth an intergovernmental agreement on what should be the last piece of the puzzle for completing the stormwater assembly for storage. So it'll be Thursday night, I believe it's at 5:30. And anybody who wants to come out and see what we're up to, you're welcome to attend. And you know, I forgot what my other thing was. I'm not so used to having so many people in the audience. This is great. If I remember, I'll bring it up later, so. Okay, so we'll move on. Approval of the agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Consent agenda, I will ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Approval of village council meeting minutes for February 4th, 2020, regular meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated January 31st through February 13th, 2020, in the amount of $789,647.76. Resolution number R152020 approving amended and restated Nortaf governing documents for adoption. Resolution number R162020 approving a Class A1 liquor license for MGS Hospitality LLC doing business as 501 Local. Resolution number R172020 Parkway Tree Pruning Removal Maintenance and Restoration Contract and Resolution number R182020 purchase of a multipurpose tractor and Resolution number R192020 approving a contract with Rusko for the purchase of underground cable for adoption.
Thanks, Rob. All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote? Some move. Roll call vote? Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfair? Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff? Motion carries, thank you. Item nine, 2019 Landmark Preservation Awards Presentation. Each year, the Landmark Preservation Commission recognizes the efforts of property owners to preserve Winnetka's housing stock. Louise Howland, the chair of the LPC and former village president, will present the awards for 2019. Come on up, Louise.
Okay. This is the best part of being a member of the Landmark Preservation Commission. We apologize, we're a little late this year. These are the 2019 awards, but they are just as wonderful later as they were when we looked at all of these homes and installations also won at the Hadley Institute. We will be sending out applications for the 2020 awards, so we encourage all of you to talk to your neighbors. Anybody that wishes to receive an award, to apply for these, this wonderful award. There are three categories, restoration, rehabilitation, and new construction. Now which one do I push? Project scope was rehabilitation of the property's green space to more formal landscaping, Okay. The first award goes to Sherry and Eric Zion, 250 Poplar Street, architect Thomas Buckley, perennial gardens with flower beds, planters, patio space, and traditional landscaping. architect and associates. The improvements included a front entrance portico, a new attached garage, an additional Are the Higgins here tonight? Oh, here you are. (applause) space in the house, kept to the original Dutch revival colonial, Dutch colonial revival Brian, congratulations. Congratulations. I have lived across the street from this wonderful garden for 50 years. style. And the house was built approximately in 1925. Are the Zions here?
Wow.
And it's never looked better. Please come up. It's wonderful. Congratulations. Love the house. Oh, sure.
Thanks, Erin. I don't know.
514 Willow Road, Kendra and Matt Thornton, architect Morganti Wilson Architects. It's wonderful. Thank you. We have to pose for a picture?
Yeah. No.
The project scope was rehabilitation of a house built in approximately 1894. The improvements included new exterior to match traditional style, along with an updated kitchen, bedrooms, and living areas, and backyard porch. Are the Thorntons here? Congratulations to you. It's wonderful. Congratulations. The next award goes to Brian and Margaret Higgins, 510 Sheridan Road. Project scope was rehabilitation of the property's green space to more formal landscaping, perennial gardens with flower beds, planters, patio space, and traditional landscaping. Are the Higgins here tonight? Oh, here you are. (applause) Brian, congratulations. Congratulations. I have lived across the street from this wonderful garden for 50 years.
Wow.
And it's never looked better. It's wonderful. Oh, sure. 514 Willow Road, Kendra and Matt Thornton, architect Morganti Wilson Architects. The project scope was rehabilitation of a house built in approximately 1894. The improvements included new exterior to match traditional style, along with an updated kitchen, bedrooms, and living areas, and backyard porch. Are the Thorntons here? Congratulations to you. It's wonderful. Congratulations. The next award goes to 700 Elm Street, the Hadley Institute for the Blind and Visually Impaired. Architect Daniella Fitzgerald, project manager of Eva Weir. The project scope was about 10 to 12 months of rehabilitation of a mid-century 1950s institutional building for offices and educational purposes of the Hadley Institute. Improvements included additional space, exterior facade repairs, and new windows, and most importantly, an elevator. I think Julie Ty is here, along with Eva Weir and Daniella Fitzgerald, and Mary Nelson, who was the, oh, and, and also Plune Construction, which made it happen, so. Thank you. You got your, your, good. 824 Bull Parkway, Steve and Kristen Dimakos. Architect Edward Deegan. Project scope, new construction of single-family home in traditional style and aesthetic of the surrounding neighborhood. Features include traditional shingled roof, porchier connection, and accents of Tudor Revival style. Design embraced floodplain location constraints and preserved mature shade tree plantings. Are the Dimakoses here? Please come.
(laughter)
Congratulations. The mission of the Landmark Preservation Commission is not only to create landmarks in the village, but to encourage our homeowners to, to be proud of their, their homes. And tonight, we see the kind of pride that our residents have in their residences and make our village what it is. So we thank the council, and we thank you for the three new landmarks that you approved a couple of months ago, and onward with historic preservation. Thank you.
Would anybody up here at the, I'm sorry, would anybody up here at the dais like to add anything?
You know, this is my favorite event of the year, and I just, I, I think it's so terrific that we have an opportunity to really recognize homeowners and architects for make, having designs that are so contextually sensitive and do such a great job in terms of fitting into and respecting the neighborhood. So not only is it great for the homeowners themselves, but for the neighborhood, so thank you very much. It's, you guys did a great job.
Anybody else want to chime in?
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, thank you so much. We really appreciate it, and it's so important to preserve the architectural heritage in our community, and it's this sort of excellence that keeps us climbing from number two to hopefully next year being the number one suburban community in the entire country. So thank you for your investment.
Who's number one?
Ah, someplace out in California, I didn't pay much attention. We have them in our sights, though. Thanks again, though, folks. Okay, we'll move along with the balance of our page, well, for me, it's page four. Item 10, ordinances and resolutions. 10A, resolution number R112020, waiving formal bidding and approving agreement with Impact Staffing LLC for temporary staffing services. This is up for adoption. I'd just like to say that the next few items contain recommendation for bid waivers and contract extensions, and in the interest of transparency, we'll hear a review of each item. These would normally end up on consent, but we felt it was important that anytime we deviate from the standard procedures, that we, we bring it forward and keep everybody after school to report on what they're up to. So the first one will be Steve Saunders, and you'll be reviewing the Impact Staffing.
Thank you, good evening. This, this item starts on page 108 of your agenda materials. For a number of years, actually even before I was Public Works Director, the Public Works Department has been supplementing our full-time staff with, with temporary staffing for certain activities. So when we have to staff up, for example, to run our fall leaf collection program, or from time to time when we do litter pickups in the railroad cut, or along some of the, like the Green Bay Road right-of-way, to supplement our refuse collection staffing when we have vacancies or during heavy times. Rather than, rather than staff up with, with part-time staff, we use a staffing service, Impact Staffing. The approved budget has $99,000 for temporary staffing, which we've stayed below for the past, you've got, on page 108, you've got the figure, we spend about $91,000 a year on average over the past four years. We've been using Impact Staffing Services for a number of years. They provide high-quality employees at a reasonable hourly rate. They've actually supplied a couple of employees that have worked out so well over time as we've had vacancies, they've become full-time employees of, of the village. So we're very satisfied with, with the quality of employees that they provide from a safety perspective, an efficiency perspective, and they, they understand our operation and, and supplement our labor. So we would request that you would approve this year's contract with Impact Staffing for an amount not to exceed $99,000, and we'll manage the hourly rates and hours to stay within the approved budget, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Steve on this?
Nope.
Do we use a temporary staff anywhere else in the village? In, in other departments, I'm not, I'm not sure we've.
Occasionally, we will have interim staffing agreements. For example, I have an interim assistant village manager right now, and that's a contractual service.
Not an ongoing.
But not an ongoing. We do have contractual services, though, for certain other.
Right.
Positions in the village, like inspection services, but not like this.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, anybody in the public like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back, and I will ask for a motion to adopt resolution number R112020. Some move. Second.
Sorry. Can I ask one question? I'm sorry.
Of course.
Should it be that a situation arises where, you know, I mean, who knows, some emergency, and we need to go over how, how is that handled? I mean, because I would hate to think that we're not getting temporary staff in because we, we have.
Sure. Well, there's a, a change order or a request where it can go up to my purchasing authority or 25 percent whatever's less, and then if we need to exceed that, we'll just come back to you.
Yeah, right, so that they're, that's.
So if we have like a, a big, you know, like a weather event of some sort.
Right, right.
And we need extra staffing, we'll come back to you.
And you have, and you have the ability to make a short.
Yes, for emergencies, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Have you ever had to blow through the contract or through your budgeted amount, Steve?
I think we might have the year that we had the windstorm, when we had all the cleanup for three or four weeks after that.
Well, that was money well spent, too, so. Okay, so I'll go back and try it again.
Sorry.
May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R112020? Some move.
Okay, second.
Roll call vote? Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you, thanks, Steve. I feel guilty keeping these guys for this stuff, but I thought it was important that we at least get it out there, so. Resolution number R202020, waiving bidding and approving change order number nine to the contract with BMAX for electrical distribution system work. Water and Electric Director Brian Keys will review this request. Hey, Brian?
Good evening, sir. Thank you for the introduction. The village is a water and electric utility, specifically the electric utility uses directional boring for the installation of underground conduit, and we also have the contractor install conduit pads. We originally competitively bid this in 2016, and we got three bids. The contractors were required to give us three years of unit pricing. It was at the council's decision to extend the contract for years two and three, which we presented and you approved. At the end of the third year of pricing, the, the awarded bidder that was successful in this was BMAX. We approached them about voluntarily extending the contract for a fourth year at the same unit terms and conditions that was from the original contract that they bid, they submitted in 2016. They voluntarily elected to do that, and again, subsequently, the village council entertained extending their contract for a fourth year. At the, this point in time, we're looking at this contract would be ending in May 31st of 2020. We approached them again, found it potentially unlikely that they'd want to go a fifth year, but they did pleasantly agree that they would hold the same pricing as what we call the year-three pricing, all original terms and conditions, subsequent to your consideration of extending the contract for one additional year. The contractor has performed by far above the other three entities I've used in my time with Winnetka. It's not to say we haven't had some things come up, but very exceedingly better than the other three contractors I've worked with in this area. The council's provided funding authorization in December for the first, in the amount of $200,000, and not asking for any additional funding authorization at this time, but ask your consideration extending the contract from the May 31st deadline would go now one additional year to 2021. In the exhibit on page 126, we show that the contractor was competitive over all three years of pricing, since I believe it's in our best interest to take an opportunity to hold pricing where it currently is fixed for an additional year. The resolution prepared by the village attorney would waive the bidding and give us the authority to move forward with BMAX for one additional year as a change order. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The majority of this work is what I call new business, is driven by customer requests. Of the funding that's in the budget, it's $475,000.
Great. Any questions for Brian? Comments?
Just to be, just to be clear, in the meantime, because this, this was from the first three years, right, of the contract?
Yes.
Yeah. And I'm asking a question just because it needs to be asked. In the meantime, prices haven't gone down, have they? Or have they?
I'd say for most of the things, I don't think we've seen prices go down, and if you use the village's own labor resources as a benchmark, we've seen prices for payroll and pension go up. So I think there's, there's a labor cost, a lot of this is a labor cost, they're a prevailing wage employer, so they're required to submit prevailing wage sheets. So I think, again, having the price locked in is to our advantage.
Had to ask a question.
And adding to that, when you look at the big difference on the original bid of one, two, and three?
Exactly.
They were a pretty good price then, so. Thanks.
Great. It seems like a no-brainer to me, Brian. Open it up to the public, would anybody have any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Any last thoughts? Okay. Yep. Makes sense. We'll move forward. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R202020?
Second.
Roll call vote? Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfair? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, resolution number R212020, information technology consultant renewal. The village's current IT consultant is offering a three-year renewal to their current agreement, which continues to offer the lowest prices and the closest competitors in the last round of bidding in 2016. Here to recommend taking advantage of the new agreement is Assistant Finance Director Tony Vasquez. Hey, Tony, how you doing?
How are you?
Welcome.
Thank you, trustee, or president, Rents. For the council's consideration is resolution R212020, the information technology consultant renewal. The village's current contract with Precient Solutions, our IT consulting service, will expire at the end of March. We have received a proposed contract renewal for three years. The annual cost of year one of this contract is $56,940, which is a 2.3% increase from our current annual cost. Years two and three of this contract would increase by 2.2% each year. It should be noted that this year-one price from Precient is over $11,000 less annually than the next closest price we received in late 2016 when we went out for proposals last. In addition, Precient has been in contract with the village since 2011. They are very familiar with our IT needs and the software we use, such as our New World ERP software. Precient has also been very helpful in helping us implement enhanced cybersecurity solutions. At this time, we do not believe that seeking proposals would produce options that would be as favorable as the proposed contract prices from Precient. For these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the proposed three-year contract with Precient Solutions. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Questions for Tony?
I, given the type of service that they're providing, it's not like they're just providing a widget. It's, there is also familiarity with the system and, and what they've already done, right? So there is benefit of continuing with the same vendor, correct?
Yes, they're, they're familiar with the various software needs that different departments have, and they provide additional support by having a member of Precient who is here two days a week to assist in IT needs as well.
So there would definitely be an additional cost, really, by switching to somebody else at this time as well, so.
If we did switch, there, there would be some disruption.
In terms of learning curve, right, exactly. Thank you.
Other questions?
Got one. So the, the $56,940 year one, I also see a table of additional resources, rates, for additional work. Have we, have we stayed within our, have we used other services of theirs that they're paid incrementally on? Or is this kind of an all-in for what we do?
Generally, for what we do, it's all-in. They do provide additional services if needed, which they do lay out in, in the contract.
I just didn't know how much we do. I see it right now, but I just didn't, on page 131.
Generally, it, it includes the, the services that we do use from them.
Okay. So you're not, but you're not going over, you think you're staying within the 56, or you're using another $10,000 of services, or?
I would imagine that, that we would stay within that, that cost.
Okay, all right. That's all I got.
Great. Anybody else? Like to call for comments from the public, would anybody like to speak on this in the audience? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up here, last, last bite at the apple. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt resolution number R212020.
Some move.
Second.
Roll call vote? Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfair?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
And trusty Swerk?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tony. I think this is the first night in a long time we've had all the department heads in the meeting at one time, so.
(laughter)
Thanks for coming tonight, I, I appreciate it. We're not done with David yet, so he gets to stick around for the fun. All right, item D, resolution number R222020, a resolution reappointing Peter, Peter M. Friedman as village attorney and improving engagement letter. The village attorney is leaving Holland tonight to establish his own municipal and land use law firm. Here to review is new partner of the firm, oh, here to review is, oh.
Ben.
This is, Ben Schuster. He's going to say something. Sorry, I just couldn't string it together, Kathy. So go ahead.
Well, thank you very, very much. So as you are aware, our practice group has departed Holland tonight, and we have started our own firm, Elrod Friedman LLP. We have really relished the opportunity, and I want to thank you all personally, that you have given us to represent this village and, and the wonderful people of the village over the last many years. So tonight, what is before you is a resolution approving a new engagement letter, which is the arrangement that will be with our new law firm, and, you know, as I know you discussed with Peter, the representation is, is going to be continued on the same terms, and with the same people that have been providing this village service over the last number of years, from Peter to myself and to everybody else on our team. So we thank you for your consideration, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Ben? Any comments?
Just saying, we've, we've received great service from, from this team, and wish you guys the best. I think it's, it's a great move. I would say thank you to Holland and Knight as well. They've been a great partner over the years, but, yeah, I think this is, is great, and we look forward to continued service with you guys.
One, one very simple question on page one forty-seven of the packet. The chart, the chart of rates, which, which rate are we finding? What's the difference between the two columns?
So, so we have a, our government discount rate, which is what the village pays us for our various services. We have a special government discounted rate, which is for certain services that are not the typical retainer services, things that are reimbursed usually from other third parties, so it's not really going against the village. So, that's why it's divided up into two columns.
So, the special is kind of reimbursable generally?
Right.
Okay, yep.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Any comments from the public on this? Seeing none, I just want to say that, I have to admit that when, when it was announced, and I wasn't even on council at the time, that we were going to outside council, that I was really unsure whether we were going to end up with the sort of attention and service that I had come to enjoy when Kathy Janega was serving as our full-time in-house legal counsel. And I have to say that, that Peter and his team have done nothing but overperform since the day they walked in here. They have been amazing, and the fact that they can draw from, from a group of experience and, and trade experiences between villages really helps us a lot in being ahead of the curve on a lot of issues. I mean, a good one is the, the whole legalized weed thing, and Peter was on top of that, not only because he understood it, but because he had a team behind him that was taking this out to many other municipalities. So, I have just been really impressed with, with Peter's work for the four years I've been up here so far, and I'm really proud that we're able to help him launch his new business and, and keep him in the, the hot seat over here along with Ben. So, good stuff, and I'm really, I'm really happy that we can, can move forward on this. So, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt resolution number R-22 2020.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote?
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move on to item E, ordinance number M-42020, amending a special use ordinance for a church at twelve fifty-five Willow Road. This application to amend an existing special use permit for the Winnetka Presbyterian Church was extensively discussed at the February four council meeting. A condition was proposed to ensure the church will work with the village to remediate localized flooding. Here to review is Community Development Director David Schoen.
I have nothing to add, other than the condition that you included at your last meeting has been incorporated into the ordinance. The church has agreed to that condition, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you remind us, David, about the condition?
Yeah, so the condition is that the church will work with the village to address localized flooding issues that have been identified in the area, that they would take, make all reasonable effort to work with us. Any expenses, we've agreed in this condition that any expenses that would result from those efforts, that the, the village would be responsible for those, and the church would agree to work with us in terms of, for instance, any easements or whatever we would need to secure from them to address the localized flooding issue.
Great. Any questions for David?
I reviewed the language. It's what we discussed.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to open it up to the public. Would anybody from the audience like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, anything from the church? Sure, come on up.
My name is Robert Lewis. I've been a member of the Winnetka Presbyterian Church for forty years. Probably the first twenty-five, I lived in Winnetka with pride, and, and have always had pride in Winnetka. I live in Northfield now, quite close, across from Nutria West, if you're familiar with it. My role in the church has varied from year to year, but presently I am in what we call an elder, which is part of the governing body of the church. Probably its oldest-serving elder, I suppose.
The eldest elder.
Yeah, and I, I am the Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, so I have been responsible for this project, which is subject to this amendment, for about two years. And so, it's, it's got a lot of heart on it. I led a team of people, so it's more than just me. And we have taken, I, I remember the first zone, first zoning meeting where the public did speak, and they spoke properly and eloquently. So, we took to heart the zoning committee who proposed that we scale back, because we had about a five-hundred square feet addition of impermeable surface, and we scaled back in two ways. One, we had a, one, we deleted a stone path we had included. Second, the church has changed when it did its addition in twenty years ago, in which we, the entrance to the church moved to the east end of the building. So, we, we're left with a seventeen-foot-wide sidewalk on Facing Willow Road, which has been used, but we don't need seventeen feet, so we shortened that down to, I think, seven feet width and saved two-fifty square feet, maybe. The net result being that we, we're, we're net zero in terms of any impact of more impermeable surface. Now, having said that, we're, we're gratified by the affirmation from the committees, but we do take seriously the neighbors to our north, which, which are the Ash Street properties, and that they do have flooding, just like Duke Child's Field gets flooding whenever it rains. I've seen that for forty years, and I gather it may be part of your storm management options or how to, you know, address it. So, we're more than happy to be part of the process of addressing storm management, stormwater management, and will cooperate with any appropriate proposals by the village and our neighbors. And according to the amendment that's been prepared, I affirm that we accept it and will honor it. I will present it to our session meeting tomorrow night as a formal proposal and acceptance that will be written into our minutes, so it will be part of our history. I'd like to just add one thing, if I may, if I know where, I just think it's important. We, we, I, you know, as I went into this project and I, I'd been all around and I looked, taken more notice of the village. In fact, I particularly noticed this painting in the hallway of Winnetka eighty years ago or more, probably with Indians and some, but I noticed the buildings on that painting, there were these four or five churches, plus government buildings and a few houses. But it pointed to me to the relevance of a faith community within Winnetka, and there are a number of them, wonderful facilities, and each contributes in various ways. And I noticed that one, one way we participate is we're sort of a gateway to Winnetka, if you will, because anybody coming across Edens and down Willow Road, what, what's the first thing you see is a church. And so, it's, it's, to me, it's symbolic, and we, it's, it's our, forever been our rationale, but it's increasingly our intention to be a good-looking gateway and a place that brings credit to the village. Apart from how we look and where we're located, we do services and projects that are, I think, bring honor to the village. People vote at our church, and we, we, I like doing that. Kids from Washburn have attended coaching or schooling lessons on faith of various kinds, and our pastor participates in that, because we're so close to Washburn. We have three-a-week Al-Anon meetings, if you're familiar with Al-Anon, two-a-week AA meetings that are free to those societies that welcome our space, and we're happy to have them. We have a program in which we participate, sort of Chicago and suburb-wide, but it's a friendship-type project where women and children that are homeless are put, and put into a job learning and other assistance, and various churches contribute one week a quarter for sleeping facilities and food and companionship. And then during the day, they go to their training and exterior facilities, but at least it's taking advantage of the building we did twenty years ago, and the village approved to add, I don't know, twenty-five thousand square feet or something. We really absorbed impermeable surface because of parking needs and building additions. But in conclusion, my point is we've put it to good use, and we can do more for the village because we have that space, and that's our mission, really, is to be a good, good neighbor. So, that's, that's my conclusion.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your willingness to cooperate, and I think the fact that you are a good neighbor is reflected in the fact that we're all comfortable with soft language about a willingness to participate and work together going forward. So, we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Chris, if I can add a word. I, this is, as I've come back and, and served again, I was on the council twenty years ago, I think, when the, the large addition, you know, was, was approved. And of course, hindsight being two thousand and twenty, you know, we, nobody foresaw, you know, how the flooding issues were going to increase in, in our part of the village. I live, I live, I live out that direction, too, so I, I share in the issues that you have with the flooding. But I, as a council, we're just really grateful that an institution like you all are willing to say, gosh, you know, the solution that we put together twenty years ago didn't quite fit what needs to be done now and being willing to work with us. So, thank you very much for your cooperation, because it's hugely important to those neighbors, and if something we can do to make it better, that's great for everybody. So, thank you very much. And thank you for allowing polling places, because since they can't be in schools anymore, it's really tough. So, allowing, you know, the, the church allowing the community in is, is great as well, so thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm just happy to have a church on our side and dealing with this biblical event that we keep encountering. I think, you know, we said it at the last meeting, but, you know, life can't stop in these flooded areas. We just have to work together the best that we can. I had no doubt that the church would, would do that and, and was doing that, and, and so I'm really gratified to hear everything you said, and it just reinforces our feeling coming into it that the church is, is a great neighbor, and, and at the same time, everybody in the neighborhood should know that we are working extremely hard to make the flood relief happen. We don't talk about it all the time, but that doesn't mean we're not thinking about it almost all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of progress has been made. When dirt starts moving, that may be a source of inconvenience to people, but we're, we're doing the things that I think we need to do so that forty years from now, the next village council's not having this discussion. So, but thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we'll move forward. May I have a motion to adopt amended ordinance number M-42020?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Lamphier?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swark?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Old business, there's none. New business, there's none. Appointments, none this evening. We'll have a few next time around. Closed session, there's none. And adjournment, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So...
Second.
Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.